Okay, we'll call the panel Select Board Regular Meeting Thursday, February 27, 2013, to order at 7:00 PM. The agenda approval, approval of the minutes 12413, which was a special meeting. Warrants, mail, road foreman's monthly board meeting, backhoe bids. Reminder that the excess weight permits renewal time has arrived. We have old business, we have dog kennel and officer to be added. For discussion under new business, we have two legal items. One will be a letter from our labor lawyer and the other will be an executive session. And to inform the board that I have a meeting with Peter Holden Thursday at 1:30 on the hydro. He called to set up with. Would that, if there's nothing more to be added to the agenda?
I'd like to add bricks, wax, whatever, the town bricks.
Um, would you like to do that tonight or would you like to wait till full board?
I don't know, really don't matter.
It might be a little easier if whoever was here. Well, I'm just thinking that.
We can wait till next week then.
That might be better off table till next week. Okay, with that, take a motion for the approval.
Some move.
We hear a second?
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Approval of the minutes 12413, special meeting.
It's all moved, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Payroll and the amount of, or for 12713 to 2113, in the amount of $5,614.61. Period date payroll 213, 20313, 2813, in the amount of $655334. General fund, general account, 2813, any amount of $21,583 cents. Uh, your largest items are payroll transfer, $2,099 diesel fuel, $4,971. Loader and greater tires, highway department, 4868. And champlain oil for gas, 1070, 1092, some of your larger items. General, 2113, in the amount of $11,297.76. Again, we got rock salt, uh, two different things of salt there, 31 tons and 40 ton. And equipment maintenance, those are your larger items on that one. Take a motion on the warrants. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Local Government Day, Wednesday, February 20, 2013, Capital Plaza Hotel in Mount Pilgrim, 9 to 3:00 PM. Ah, we have a check from the state of Vermont, in the amount of $602,849.67. These are, I believe, our sewer reimbursements in the wastewater, uh, three different accounts, $52,849, $50,000, and $500,000.
Here, I thought it was my pay.
Not quite. You have to hear three years to get that. Okay, we have a driveway excess on Barber's Pond Road. I guess we're the ones approved this, I thought the road foreman, do you have to look at that?
Well, I just issued, or rolled the permit with the applicant and, uh, it's until it is complete, it got one year before it's actually, uh, accepted. And you're just accepting that they filed the permit.
Okay, alright. Everybody see this on Barber's Pond Road? Would you like a motion to have me sign it?
Motion, sign it.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Ah, we also have in the mail, total $549. And I believe this is a microphone and I believe it would be maybe for town meeting?
Correct.
Correct? Good. So, maybe everybody will be able to hear what's going on over there when people speak or whatever. That concludes our mail.
Is the board going to approve that expenditure? That's why she gave the...
Sorry about that. Just was there, I thought it was all done. Okay, we need a motion to approve.
Make a motion, we go ahead with that.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. House approved, thank you Linda. Okay, road foreman's monthly board meeting.
Yeah, I guess first thing off the bat, uh, town highway bridge and weight restrictions. Last year there was an issue that wasn't actually put online, I guess. We got the information late so we didn't actually get to doing that. But Linda spent a long time on going over this whole program in order to get it online with the state. So, uh, along with getting close to the excess weight permits and stuff like that, so now everything should be, there's no other, um, thing that we have to do with this, just?
No, it's done.
So, it's all set.
It's activated.
Great. So, people can go right online and pick up?
They should be able to go right online now, win there and find out, make sure that it's all there. Every road is posted in that, um, program. And, uh, there's only three bridges in the town that are actually over a nine-foot span, so, uh, but they're legally posted, so. All town highways are posted for 24,000 pounds and anything over that, you need a permit.
Tell that to log trucks.
Log trucks, anything that is over 10,000 pounds.
I've seen two or three combined log house again, because I'm watching that later.
Right, right. But you know, this time of year, when the ground being frozen, a lot of frost in the ground, they don't hurt the roads a bit. It's just that when the frost starts coming out of the ground, things start getting soft underneath, that's when you start breaking things up.
And I'm sure there'll be copies here if anybody needs one, they can come or see one of the selectmen, they have a copy of these. Okay?
Uh, I noticed that you pointed out that we got some tires, we put four new tires on the back of the grader and two new tires on the front of the loader. Uh, I think it was three weeks ago, they went out to load some sand and there was a slice on the inside of the loader tire. I tried to fix those sidewalls before, but they just don't, for some reason, they just don't stay, so we had to purchase two new tires. One tire still good, we used that for spare, but we needed some tires, so. It's expensive, luckily we buy that, them tires off the state bid, so they're not really that expensive.
That'd be the first set, first set on the grader, right?
Uh, first set on the back, yes. Eventually at some point we'll put two on the front, but, uh, um, they're in better shape than the ones around the back. We're eating first mistletoe tomorrow, I guess.
It does sound that way.
Not sure exactly what is gonna happen, but, uh, we have, we have plenty of salt and plenty of sand and, uh, I guess they got a feeling tomorrow's gonna be a long day.
Tomorrow night.
Tomorrow night.
Well, tomorrow for these guys and tomorrow night.
Right, regularly, I mean, we have to be at work at 7:00 in the morning, if there's snow before that, any, any amount will, will get out there, of course, before that, but, uh, we usually plow to about 10 o'clock at night. And depending on just how hard it's coming down, we'll determine if we stay in any longer than that. Uh, and then, you know, I heard it's supposed to get really heavy, uh, throughout the night, so we may be coming in really early and then, of course, tomorrow will be a long, Saturday will be a long day also, because we have no relief drivers for the big trucks.
Yep. Well, the good part about it being Saturday, there shouldn't be as much travel as average, which will help a little.
Right. And the other thing is, it's supposed to be really, uh, pretty good and cold, so we're not gonna see, uh, wet, sticky snow, it's gonna be a powdery type and should be easy to push, to get, to get. You'll have better traction on a, on a road that's really cold versus when it's...
Only thing I'd worry about now is the wind that they're talking, it might, with lighter snow, we could end up with some drifting effects, which, it's February.
Well, I guess by now everybody's got their snow tires on, so.
If they don't, they certainly will wish.
Uh, I guess, uh, Ronnie and I took a ride there, was it Tuesday?
Tuesday, yep.
Went down and looked at a case back home, uh, had to pick up some parts at Milton Cat, so got a chance to look at the Cat, because that was the least expensive one. Um, I, uh, they're both nice machines, I mean, of course, when they're new, they're...
Yep.
Uh, I don't, what do you think, Ron?
Well, each one had some features that were, I thought myself, they're both great quality machines, I mean, but it's, uh, they had a couple little differences. You know, the Cat had something I liked a little better, so did the Case, but that's, you ought to get a nice machine for almost 100,000 miles.
Right. That's right.
Do you think they're both comparable?
I think they're a great machines. Weight wise, the, the Cat's just a little bit heavier machine, but, uh, they're, they're the same class machine. Um, and like he said, there's a, there's a couple features that, uh, you know, one's better than another, both comparable, one way or the other. Um, I guess the only major thing that, that I look at is how long something like that's gonna last. Um, I know through dealing with the Caterpillar stuff that, uh, the parts department is second to none. Anytime that I've ordered a part, and I'm talking even back 15 years ago, that has never once been a part that I hadn't ordered, that didn't have either that day or the next day. They're not subbing part numbers, they're not, uh, they don't give you a whole run around, you're not on the phone very long. Nowadays, you can even, uh, call up there with a part number, and if it's things like glass, they won't ship glass and things like that, but you can go right down there and go into this, into the, uh, parts department, push, they got a machine in there, we just push in panel and it, all, everything you order will come right up on the screen, you just push all the screens, it picks you out a ticket. So, you walk in to get it out and you don't have to talk to nobody, just grab your stuff and leave. So.
Yep.
But like he said, they're all, they're, they're all nice machines and they're new. And, um, I guess, I think that, uh, not having any, had any dealings with the Case, uh, I, I, uh, not really sure how that would go.
Now, where's Borregard, is that, New Hampshire?
No, they're north of Burlington.
Coldchester.
Coldchester.
Next town up.
He said that, uh, we went to Monroe Tractor, which is in Latham, and, uh, the gentleman from Borregard, the salesperson from Borregard, said that, you know, that they wouldn't expect us to buy the parts from them, because we could just go to Latham and get them. So, since one intended one doesn't the others, so. The, uh, I guess the cost thing is really pretty important nowadays, and I think the gentleman at Cat there's, uh, went kind of above and beyond to get us the price that is less than the rest of the Caterpillar, because usually it's more.
Yep. It's more than what we had for figures before.
Right.
The figures have actually come up on the trade and down on the retail end of the purchase. They certainly are working with us. Would you like to at this time enter into that section of it?
I will make a recommendation that the town hall purchase a 420 Caterpillar backhoe.
Okay. Alright, just to remind the board, everything out here, the total bid on the 420 F is $93,056 for the trade-in allowance of $20,000, which is a balance of 73.56, and a five-year lease, municipal lease option of $15,609.51 a year. Our road foreman liked that one. Uh, any discussion from the board, we can have a motion.
Well, I'd go with a motion, but we once talked about 20 grand for five years. Would it be worthly to check in a four-year lease from them guys?
A four-year?
Yep.
I'm not sure, but the other option that the actual Cat dealer, um, mentioned to me was, uh, maybe our treasurer could find a, uh, way of financing it, uh, for less, smaller interest rates than, um, than what they're offering.
I know when we originally started talking about, we talked maybe 20,000 for five years, if we can get the four years for 2021, we'll save probably 3, 4,000, fine each.
I don't think you're gonna save quite that much.
No, probably about two.
The total interest paid, um, as we, as the standard right now on this machine here is, uh, was 4,900, about the whole five-year period. So, yeah, I haven't had a chance to talk to the owner about it, but, uh, she might and might not be able to find a lower interest rate. If we could finance it somewhere else, which would drop the payment down to, or she could probably come up with a four-year herself.
Well, with that, we could make a motion on the actual equipment, the financing to co-sign with between the treasurer and this on what our best financing scale would be. So, if you'd like to make that into a motion.
Yeah, make that into a motion. If we can't, again, do any better, well, then we'll stick with a five-year lease and go with, uh, Southwood and Milton.
Okay, so the motion is for the Cat 420, the amount of 73.56, and financing to be determined on the lowest cost of interest that we can acquire. Okay?
So, now we can discuss it?
Yes.
Okay, well, I was under the impression, I don't know, four or five weeks ago, when we talked about this stuff and we're in a panic, the Cat was disabled and, uh, everything was gonna, you know, we were all cranked up about getting a new machine, that what we were, we did take, I think it was four weeks ago, we took a vote, I presume, I, uh, remember, and the vote was four to one, four to one, that we fixed the Cat and, uh, sent it down for, uh, dialysis or whatever. That was the, and we also said, well, we'll let Casey go out and get some pricing, I need to see where we're going. And I got nothing against, uh, us, uh, having good equipment and stuff, but that's the impression I had four weeks ago. I think it's in the minutes, that that's what we did. And I was kind of surprised when I come here and I see the guy from, uh, Borregard and, uh, Southwood, Milton and everybody here, as if we were gonna award a bid. I thought we were looking for pricing to see where we're gonna move. And then, closing on this statements, I think that as a selectman, I think the selectman should decide whether or not, it's nice to have people put their input in, but we are, uh, voted on to fill these seats, to look out for the interest of the people of the town and manage the money. Like I said, I don't mind if we need, do need this machine, I'm totally against trading the other one in, for the simple reason that for $20,000, we couldn't get a machine like that, and we could use that at the transfer station, let them have responsibility of it, as far as greasing it, they want to send it over to the garage, see if it oil changed or whatever, and, uh, they got a place to plug it in. And I think that would be a wise move for the town, rather than take this, for this $20,000, and we could put that, and if, and also it would save travel, because if the John Deere was down, say that was left down North Panel, in that warehouse, if we had a ditch to dig down there or a culvert to do, it's got the wrist on it, everything else, it's a functional machine, Casey said that himself. And, uh, so I think we'd be better off, we wouldn't be wearing them out, riding them around all over trash creation, and we'd have an extra machine. That's all I got to say.
Okay, the only correction I'll make, and I believe, I know we discussed the repair, the flushing, the expenses and et cetera, if I'm not mistaken, we, before that, by maybe a week or two, we're talking about going out to bid.
Mm-hmm.
So, that bid actually went out before the actual discussion. So, that's, that's why the bids came in after that discussion.
We were asked to bid with a two-week window.
Right. Yep. Okay, more discussion on that?
No, I'm blocked.
Okay, alright, we have a motion, I think we had a second.
I think so.
Mike and Dale.
Okay, so we have a motion, we have a second to go with the Cat 420. If there's no more discussion, I will call the vote.
I'll go for it.
Aye.
Aye.
I gotta say, no, I don't want to see the Cat go, not for 20 grand. I think it's worth more to the town. And also, I think that the, the transfer station has an investment already, they paid for half of the John Deere, so they ought to at least have one machine they could call their own. Later on, if they wear it out, well, they got something to sell, or, I mean, probably won't have much trade value, but they got something to sell if they upgrade. And, and just packing trash, and who knows how long they're gonna pack trash, but for $20,000, if it lasts five years, that's pretty cheap, as far as I'm concerned.
Okay. Alright, there's three in favor and one negative.
I, uh, you know, I'm, I'm starting to think that, uh, you know, it may be worth $20,000, I, you know, I don't think that, I think the system is contaminated and also that, well, maybe in a couple, three, four, or five years, you may put another pump in it, but that's, you know, they gave us the complete total core on the last one, so we had $1,300 plus two days' worth of labor and involved in changing the pump, and then boom, now we're back to another machine that still works pretty decent. If it wasn't for, uh, the back of it being really loose, I mean...
It was 20 years old.
With bushings and, uh, the main pins and things, uh, I, I, you know, it's, 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 it's probably worth $20,000.
I, I, I feel, you know, I understand what Ronnie's saying, I disagree with the fact that we use your input on the equipment. You people are the ones that use that, we're the managers of spending the money, but we rely on your input as a person using this, so your input is valuable to us. Uh, we do have to make the decision, but we have to do it with the acknowledgement on the people who use this stuff. Uh, none of us, I'm not an equipment operator per se, so with that...
Let me ask you a question, KG.
Yes?
Probably letting them, closing the gate after the horse is out, but, um, on the back end of that current Cat, how much would it cost to redo that? I mean, putting pins and bushings and to bring it so there's no play or anything like that into it? Can you, can that be done here, or does that have to go over to?
Um, I don't, I don't know if it, I mean, the, the ones on the swing cylinders, they can be done here, because I've, I've, uh, I think I've replaced seals in one side of the swing cylinders, which all that is, the bushing and the pins. But the problem is, is the cast, I'm not sure if there's bushings in the cast part of the, of the, which actually swings, you know? Whether or not they can, that can be done here, I, I don't, I don't, I don't think so. Uh, the main pins and bushings, I think that's just a, uh, once you pull the pin out, you can slide the bush now, once it's, it's, uh, you have to put an anchor so it doesn't move, I'm not sure about the bottom one, because that's got a big nut on it, I'm not sure, I've never done that around, so.
Well.
Uh, you know, and I understand what Ronnie's saying about, about traveling the machines around, uh, but regardless of what you do, if you don't have a trailer, you still have to bring the machine to where you, you're gonna use it. And we don't go from one end of town to the other end of town, then back to the other end of town, we work in one area of town and move from that area to a little further down the road and work in that area, unless there's an emergency where you have to change a culvert, uh, that has failed, or you have a, a high water, a lot of rain at some point, and it has to repair a shoulder or something, that one is this end of town to go to another end of town to work in another area that's in the same predicament.
Yeah, I think, I think we're probably oversighting the fact that this is a 20-year-old machine.
20 years is not a long time for a heavy piece of equipment.
No, it's not a long, but it was what, 60-something thousand, 20 years ago.
Machine originally cost the town $49,000 originally. That's what, that's what the town paid for it. It's 300, 230 hours on it, when the town bought it. And, um, you're, you know, if, if, if the transfer station would rather have that backhoe versus the John Deere, then I could understand them, uh, just taking that machine, uh, and, uh, reimbursing the highway department for whatever the other machine, half of what the other machine is worth. That would be something that would have to be discussed with that, because they're the ones that are using that machine, it's, has worked fine over there for, and it's, you know, I, I mentioned before that the other machine is bigger than the other, than the, than the Cat. Well, it is, in a sense, it's a, it's a 16,000-pound machine versus an 18,000-pound machine. Uh, height-wise, the boom is, that'd be a little bit higher, but, and, and it does have more power, because it's more horsepower. But, uh, do they need that big of a machine over there? Probably not. They really probably don't need a 416 over there either, because that's kind of the big side for packing trash. I don't know what...
But we already own it.
But we already own it.
So, it's there.
That's the good part about it, and if, you know, having an intelligent discussion, I think that we would solve a lot of problems, and I'm sure that, I mean, as far as the looseness goes, it's usually the same guy operating it over there all the time. And, I mean, if you get, that's right, if you ride, if you jump from that, from a brand-new machine into that old loose machine, you'll be in trouble. But if you are running that loose machine, there's no problem. It's, I mean, you know when to let off on the lever, it's gonna swing a little further or whatever.
Is it, is it, uh...
Well, all I got... Well, all I got to say at this point, we've made a motion and voted on it. So unless somebody wants to amend the motion and withdraw it, we've already voted for, for the cap. Unless I missed my guess somewhere along the vote.
I wouldn't be sitting here and telling you that we need a new machine if we didn't, if we needed a new machine.
You know, we've, we've discussed this and.
When I go jump in it and hop in it to use it, that, there's no issues.
Right, exactly. And that's, that's why we were here and that's what we discussed it.
When you take the machines that are 16, 17, 18, 19 years old. Occasionally you're gonna have some issues with it. And some of them are gonna take you for a couple of days, like we ran into with the transfer station.
And at the same time, I mean, wasn't the loader down too? At the same time that, I mean, I thought that had a fender off it or something over there at the same time.
No, we had a, we had a flat tire, but that was.
Well, there you are, they had two machines down. And that's, the, the only thing I'm saying is I ain't, I ain't against the town having good equipment. I reiterate that over and over. But I am, I feel that that has more value to us than it would as a machine. And then if, like I say, I mean, they used to load sand down there with a farm tractor down there in North Pownell. So if that other tractor was there, I mean, it's, we already own that. We're only discussing 20 grand here.
If, if you, if, if you think it's. I don't know what Hap is, is, is said to you in any discussions about that machine or the other machine.
Well, Hap didn't care for the John Deere, cause it goes higher. And he was as far as, I mean, it could cause damage. You get used to it, just like you get used to the other machine. And they're already more used to the other machine. And we don't know where that's going. I mean, we may even wind up with compacters or something else. Who knows what's gonna happen? And I mean, but it would be nicer to have a machine there than if, you know, say if there's. If it's a stormy day or something, they can go over and get a bucket of sand and they could throw it on the thing on a Saturday. I mean, not if it's a stormy day that day, because you guys would be out. But if you're out, if it got frozen the night before, they could throw a little sand on or something. They got their machines right there. And then, and I'm sure, I've talked to Hap about it. I know that they'll, they'll grease it and stuff, far as changing the oil, but they don't have a building to go in. So it might be a little rougher, but. And I'm sure that machine would last a long time doing trash. And if you're gonna go and buy another machine, you know, like if we're gonna get, get another machine later on. Well, geez, this still not work or whatever, it ain't working out. I don't know. To me, I don't, I don't think it makes good sense to, to let that machine go for 20 grand. But like you said, you had a, had a vote and if you want to trade it in.
It may be, you know, if, if they're not comfortable with the, with the John Deere, then. And it's, maybe you probably should at least discuss it with them to find out if. They don't think that the, the, the John Deere is gonna, is too big over there or they're not comfortable with it. Or, you know, it is a little bit bigger machine, but.
But it's, it's again, something you get used to. Anything different, you're gonna have to get used to. I, I don't see that as a serious issue. Between the two, that's the better of the machines we got right now.
Yeah, well, that's.
I mean, at least supposedly.
Yeah, well, it is.
Yes. So we're transferring that to the transfer station basically for them to use. Who knows what the outcome will be in the future of the transfer station? They've got a better machine. We voted to put you into a new machine, which is our frontline machine. So there's no questions to ask on it. Unless there's more discussion on this, I would say that we close this discussion. We've, we've had open discussion on it and I think we've covered it from at least A to C.
I'm good.
Mike?
Well, I'm gonna vote against it for kind of.
Which you already did, this was just discussion, so, okay.
Well, I mean, I, I already beat it to death and I'm not gaining no support, so.
We're trying to just be fair about it across the board, okay? It's a bend to accept the cap. So all we need to do is get the financing in order and we'll know what direction we're going there. Okay. Is there anything else you'd like before?
I guess there was one thing there and I guess you were gonna read off a, a letter that was sent here about job descriptions or whatever that is.
I am, yes.
Anybody else has got any questions then?
Okay, I got two more small things we'll get to and we'll get right to that. Just a reminder again on the excess weight permit renewal time is still. Somebody out there that hasn't got that to this office, please do so. One quick thing I'd like to bring up on our dog officer and trying to get this. Initials, why can't I think of them? Animal control officer. We're having difficulties moving forward with this and a couple of the reasons being. Is I'm reading this over with Great Fields contract, which Bennington uses and I believe other people do. But we still need an animal officer to take care of this problem, picking up or whatever with the animals involved. And it unfortunately still requires. Whoever our animal control officer is, is to do something with these animals. Between 12 PM and 3 PM during the week. And Saturday nights, Sunday nights, nights during the week. I mean, this, this Great Fields can only, you can only bring these animals in between nine to 12. Monday through Friday and three to six. Saturday from nine to five, Sundays from nine to 10 and five to 6 PM. Which means whoever we have for an animal control officer needs to have adequate housing. To take care of this before they can be taken up there. I don't have a problem using Great Fields. But I do believe we need to structure ourself within, to take care of these animals within our own orders first. Which means an animal control officer picking them up should have an adequate place to take them to, to house them.
It's only for a short period of time, right?
Right. But we, we have a five day.
I was under the impression by talking to Steve, who we have right now as a temporary or, or whatever. Fill in animal control officer, that he didn't mind doing that. He just didn't want to keep them for weeks at a time.
But he doesn't have a facility to keep them. He doesn't have adequate at all. And he never has had. And we've been lacking that from day one, which isn't not only fair to him, but it's certainly not fair to anybody else. That would be interested in maybe taking this position when there's so much involved. When we could take and burden some of that. And other than make a big spiel about this, my thought was originally, and I still tend to go with it. We need to have some sort of a small shed building. That would hold three or four animals as a shed. Set up somewhere, either on somebody's property that has the available land to do this, that would be interested. Or to use it over in our own facility at the transfer station or whatever. To have a drop point for these animals to have shelter. For at least a couple of days to see if local people do respond to them. And if it's in the middle of the night, they can get them there, then they can take them to Great Fields. I, I believe having a contract with these people is great. It gives them a chance, but we still need to make it more acceptable for somebody who would apply for this job. Or make it easier for them to do this job. So what I'd like to see this board do is my thought is, and you guys think on it, is us to. Get some free label, labor, buy a shed or do something to convert it into something. Where dogs aren't chained or in a metal cage outdoors or whatever. That we should be taking care of somebody's pet that got away. I know there's some animals that are, probably that would be a treat to them, to be tied to a, a real dog coop. But I think a lot of people's pets that do get lost should be treated a little differently and I think we have that responsibility.
I think that's probably a good idea for the animals, but how are you gonna judge on how big you're gonna get it? Because you're not, in one time, you're not gonna know how many animals you're gonna end up with.
Oh no, well, you, you're not gonna plan for a dozen. Plan for four or five and that's the best you can do. And I, if you got more than that, that would be rare, but again.
Does Bennington have any such thing? They got a holding place?
I believe they do.
I don't think so, but.
They have just set up with the, the village police to change the way they're operating. They do use Great Fields.
They use Great Fields, I realize that.
But they also have the same thing.
I beg to differ a little bit, because, I mean, I've been over to Stevie's place over there. He had a building. You could put a couple of dogs in there without any trouble. It was a little milk house, had a roof on it. And also you had a couple of dog houses. And for a few hours, I don't think that's a bad deal. Really, I mean, I don't think we gotta get into a labor, cause all these things do, I hate to say it, is they snowball. This town can't afford running no cattle. If anything can't afford it with a lot more population than we do, we can't afford it. People gotta take more responsibility for their animals to start with. And if we can charge them for these things and ever collect, but you're not going to. We can't be good hearted all the time. We have to look at things in a practical manner.
Ronnie, we can't have the state that coming down on us either. We were already in that situation and we had a much better holding setup than previous. And the towns still found themselves in a situation where we were not following guidelines.
I'm not asking for any, I'm asking to open this up wide enough so that it might be more people interested. In taking this position if they had an idea how they were gonna do it. There are people out there, animal lovers, that would take these dogs in if they didn't have to figure out how or what. If we open that door, we're talking a shed. I don't know what a little storage shed would be. I can't believe you'd be talking more than a thousand dollars to put something together. Then you have a structure for four or five animals. I don't think if you brought two animals in, you may be lucky enough to put them in a, a building together. But you may not. You may have a, a Chihuahua and you may have a, a pit bull. And I don't think that's, you throw them in a building to throw them together and say, okay, this is the house for them. Yes, Jim?
If the health officer can.
You certainly may.
Come in on this. This is something that has been kicked around and kicked around and kicked around for the past 10 friggin' years. And there is some money available for this structure. Because Karen has been collecting money out in the front office in her little drop box for years. I, I, you know, I have no idea what's in that fund, but it's there. There, there's, there's already money that people have contributed. I have contributed, you know, you have probably contributed. I, I think every one of us has dropped a buck in that box somewhere along the line. And we really should have some kind of a holding facility for the animal control officer to use. Now, how long do you keep the dog there? How long do you keep the cat there? Wait, you know, I, I have no idea. But there should be some sort of a town municipal facility. To hold animals for short periods of time before they either go to euthanasia. Or get returned to their owners or get farmed out to somebody that wants them. We really should have something. And it may not cost the taxpayers anything. Depending on how much is in the lockbox that's, that's already there.
That's, that's what I'm asking this board for right now. And I, I agree with it totally.
How many animals a year are we talking?
I don't.
Five, 25?
I, I would, if I go out on a limb.
Could be anywhere 15, 20.
And then how aggressive the dog officer is in the pursuit of.
A lot of people have called, I've picked up calls myself and fortunately people were looking for their dogs, which is great. Some of them unfortunately know. But I think, I'll go out on a limb, I'm gonna say 50, 50. And I think I'm going overboard with the 50% that don't get taken. I think it's a lot less than that. But even if it is only 50, 50, we should have a place. I think it opens a door for us to have a better run facility, for somebody to do the job and do it easier for themself and correct it. I would certainly like to think that if one of my animals got loose and it got picked up, it was taken halfway decent care of. Until I could find it. I mean, I know some people don't look for them, some people don't watch their kids. But that's not our decision. Our decision is to try to make the best deal out of it we can and go forward and so far we haven't. So what I'd like to see this board do is make an approval, approval to us to get a shed of some sort. Nominate one of us, I don't care who, to look into it, see how much it costs, see if we can get somebody to help us build one. Donate whatever it takes to get one together.
Is advertisement in the paper?
And then go forward.
They can build chicken coops, they should be able to.
And again, put this out for advertisement that we're looking for. And animal control officer, we have a facility that can either be on our property or theirs, depending on. Their current situation with property. It opens the door. And regardless who gets it, it makes it easier for them to take these animals to a place where they can open a door, put them in a pendant area. That has shelter, comfortable for the dogs, comfortable for them. Makes their life easier, it'll make ours easier in the long run. And for the very small bit of money we're talking, I think we're.
I don't object to it, I just hate like get us all set up and it's still get, receive complaints from.
Oh, you're gonna anyways, that's, that's, you know, that's the perfect world you're not gonna find with this, but you know.
The only thing I got is we're still tossing it back and forth on whether it's gonna be the animal control officer's land or the town's land. Say this year here, we got a dog officer that wants it on his land. He quits next year and the next control, now we'll put it over town office. We gotta make sure this building is movable.
That's why I'm saying a shed.
It, it should be a municipal structure on municipal land. It really should. That way you, you eliminate where do we have it this year, where do we have it next year, where do we have it that 10 years down the road? I mean, we, you know.
Jim, who's gonna take care of them?
The animal control officer is responsible.
He's gonna carry water up to the transfer station. Or they're gonna bring, they're gonna have dog food all over the place or whatever.
The animal control officer has the responsibility of taking care of the animals. But it should be on municipal land.
It's been on the back burner for years.
We don't need Great Fields if we're gonna have that.
Well, you may not.
Which I think, you know what, let them guys handle it. All we got is a short time, we gotta keep them. As far as, as far as I could see, I didn't read that letter he's got there. As far as I could see, it's a very short time that we have to hang on to.
Well, I, I totally disagree with that because of the timing. You've got something you've gotta do for certain hours, certain hours of the night, certain hours of the day. So. Anyways, I, and I, I half agree with Jim and half disagree, only for the fact if. Alright, it may not happen, but we're talking a shed that would take very little to move it. This is not a big item.
Once we bring a, a starter church.
Trailer, anything.
That's right.
Move this with, so it doesn't work, I mean, if some people swore with the right chunk of land, they've got acres, they've got an area and they wanna do it.
Back is gonna be a snowball.
And there's a great deal.
That's why I know the other towns have it.
Then the next time around, we put it over at our place. We've got a better shot of finding somebody than going to a hard place. Say they live on Center Street and they wanna be the animal control. There's no way they have a kennel down there.
I know nothing about Bennington.
The neighbors are gonna kill them. So that eliminates them even if they wanted to be. This just opens a door that maybe we actually can get somebody to help this situation out. And we tabled it, we've stumbled around it, we've had it in the folders and we pull it out and put it back in and here we sit.
Has anybody ever stayed on the camera, how much the actual dog officer? Did anybody ever state on the camera how much the actual dog officer gets for an hourly rate or is it per dog?
It's ten dollars an hour, ten dollars a day for the dog at their premise. And Great Fields is thirteen a day, I believe. And it's twenty-five if they have to have a bath or clean for fleas, which I would almost guarantee that you're gonna see a scrub down when they go in, which would be, they can't afford to have them into their animals. So, you know, you're gonna talk serious money and they may end up there. But the bottom line is, we should try this for the minimal amount of money it would cost to put up a little bit of a shelter for them and to see if it works. Worst scenario, the whole thing goes to hell and we say, oh, boy, it wasn't this stupid. We take the damn building over and put it in your yard or the transfer station and you put old paint in it or something. The building don't get thrown away. It's a usable thing, so it's not a loss. It may solve a problem for us and make whoever would apply for the job actually apply for it because it's more simpler and it's usable.
Wasn't there money in line for a dog kennel a couple of years ago in the budget?
Quite a few years ago, there was money, a fund had started. I don't know where it went. Like I said, this has gone on forever.
Oh, it's still, it's in the town report. I, you know, I have no idea what the amount is, but I was looking through the town report this morning and...
I mean, if we could build one...
There's money in that fund.
If we could build one out of the conversation, we'd have, we'd have our little kennel down here. It'd probably be staffed with eight or nine people. Just be nice to kinda finish something once. Somewhere in our lifetime. I just think it'd open the door, not to complicate things, but to make things easier for whoever does the job. So...
So the person would have an option, either if you had...
If you had the room and they wanted to do it in their yard and they got it at the right place, absolutely great. If not, you know, we cross that bridge. We got land. It's gonna be more difficult because they gotta travel to it, but listen, right now, we got no place to put them and Steve doesn't either. He's interim. It's, this is not a good setup. And it hasn't been for a long time. And we dance around it and we still come up with the same thing, nothing. So it's time to at least, I'd rather make a wrong move than no move because it's not that big of a wrong move.
So you're looking for a board member to come up with the materials list in a small sketch and what they feel would be...
I will draw the sketch. I will help. I will supply the building that they can build it in if they wanted to. And I will even help with my carpenter skills. I'm sure the dogs wouldn't be fussing.
If we can't do that, maybe what we could do is get the place like in Cheshire and the one down eleven and at the end of the year, where they got a bunch of stuff hanging over, they gotta get rid of real cheap and...
Like I said, this is...
The health officer will help you out since he is a carpenter.
That's why I say this is...
Doing different things, seeing what size we need and seeing if I can locate somebody to build it and see what it's gonna toss and get back.
I think you already found that person right there.
What I need is a motion to spend, what, five to eight hundred dollars on building materials.
If that.
Build something like this. We've got part of a fence already that we took down, put over there.
We want a...
It's a ten by ten, I believe. So you've got, you know, in the spring, we could add sections in there to divide it in, so it's actually got runs out of this little building. I mean, this is, this is a simplified thing. I'll draw it up. All I need is somebody to say, geez, it's a good idea, motion.
Yeah, first we're gonna take measure across that thing and see if it's something worth it.
Okay, you motioned it. We need a second.
I think the figure's a little low, truly. If you're gonna build a whole shed, ten by ten, twelve by twelve, I think the figure's a little low.
Okay, well...
I go a grand.
All right. Is that a second on it with a grand?
Yeah, I'll go a grand.
We have a motion and a second for a thousand dollars to play with this idea. I'll drop a scale. If you can drop a scale, we can compare them within the week. Anybody has any input or ideas, they can bring it to us and we'll toss it in. Motion and second on the floor, all in favor? Aye.
Nay. Nay. I think it's a slippery slope.
Well, we've slid down worse.
We're gonna be going right down one. We'll be like a snowball headed for hell the way we're going.
Okay. Moving right along. Okay. This one will take a minute longer. We have been playing for some time now with an attorney, a labor lawyer, asking for direction and for clarification on what is an exempt status for several employees. We have this now in our hands. And without reading the whole thing, there will be a copy here if anybody chooses to have one to read. But I will read the highlighted parts that I put on this for the executive summary. It says, "While it is impossible to predict the outcome of litigation with certainty, we believe that the administrative assistant likely would be considered to be an exempt administrative employee as she actually performs the responsibilities outlined on the job descriptions and that they are her primary duties. We also believe the town's road foreman would be considered exempt executive employee against, again, assuming his actual performs the responsibilities outlined in the job descriptions positions are his primary key duties." And it goes on to say, "Further, although it's impossible to predict an outcome of litigation with certainty, if any, A's primary duties include the responsibility set forth in the job description, it is likely that the DOL or a court would consider her to be exempt as administrative employee." Which the cut short of this is, from a legal lawyer, it was the same thing that Dale, Clint and I found out when we went to Mount Pilgrim a couple of months ago in City Townsend. Was it Rutland? Rutland, I'm sorry, okay. We met up there and the question was asked about exempt status and it was discussed to us and that went with the certificate that we had from the state that says what is exempt and what is not. So that is our legal status that we pay dearly for. In my personal feeling, this puts this matter to rest. These employees are considered exempt and this matter is over. The one thing I will add to this, Mr. Copeland has received several calls from a concerned citizen. They would like to have conferences with him in writing or whatever concerning this matter. I got an email from him today when I returned from the auction asking what should he do, what would our response be or my response at that point. And my response to him was that he would not, from this board's recommendation, discuss this with this particular party unless this particular concerned citizen wanted to retain him as legal. And I would bring it up with the board tonight and if they concurred with my feeling that he did not need a call tomorrow. If you people feel that a concerned citizen should be calling our legal attorney that we had to hire and get this information from, then I will call him in the morning and say I was wrong. But I believe when we put this into the hands of an attorney, it's for us to get the information. It's not for concerned citizens to add information or for whatever purpose, calling our attorneys. Was I correct in that assumption?
I believe so. If they want something, they should hire their own attorney and sit around their nickel.
Well, that's what I thought. We should not be paying for it.
Before we know it, we'll have every town resident going to get our attorney.
Well, we cannot afford to have everybody's opinion going across through what we consider...
She wants to pay for it, we can't stop her.
Yeah. Hey, Ronnie?
I don't know anything about legal. So, I mean, I don't feel that, how can two people use the same lawyer anyway? But I don't know anything about legal, so I'm not, I'm saying, well, hey, I know this about it. I don't. I don't know anything about legal.
So we have a motion and a second that that opinion that I gave the attorney was fine?
It's almost true.
Okay. Well, it could be, I think, a conflict to our, motion second, all in favor? Aye. I'm gonna oppose or abstain, whatever you would like.
I'm gonna abstain. I don't know anything about that stuff.
Linda? I will give this, I'll set down to Linda. That is for the records for the town copy. Okay. With that being said, we have one more legal issue and it is pertaining to pending legal action where the town could be a defendant in. So I would suggest that we have an executive session for that matter.
Motion for an executive session.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.